Twenty seventh. Uh, this is a special non-voting session, uh, so we will not be taking formal action on anything this morning. Uh, everyone, we can join via Zoom, uh, as our normal link that's on the agenda. Posting, and with that, let's just jump into it. Item number one, review and discuss regular bills. Why don't they? Debbie, would you or would someone check with the sheriff's office and make sure they've got the word that it's nine AM? They've got someone on the way.
Cheryl, on those fifteen dollar bail bonds deals I see all the time, what is, what is that actually?
You mean the cash bonds, the fifteen dollars?
Yeah, is that a fee that we're reimbursing?
The bail bonds, um...
You know, it's a pretty standard deal. I see a bunch of fifteen dollar. But I, I didn't know if that was...
Yeah, but it's like a reimbursement fee that we get and charge and then get a reimbursement on it and pay it out.
Okay.
We usually collect it and pay it out, so...
Okay.
Judge, are you on that bail bonds?
I am, and they've just made me the chairman.
And does a bail bonds person have, um, credit on file with us? I mean, as far as...
They have to, they have to put up a, a certain amount in order to be able to bond out with us.
Did we get collateral?
Right, cash or property.
Yeah.
Cash is usually then converted to a CD, which we're still locating all the records on.
And so we, we monitor that though. So we don't let Billy Bob bond somebody for a million when he's only got half a million collateral with him.
Correct.
Yes, that's right. And if, and if they want to take any collateral off, they have to kind of get the board to action on it.
Yeah, they have to go to the board for all of that. The board kind of monitors that, but so like we had one that wanted to sell pieces of their property that were collateral. So then they had to give us cash instead, so, and then we released the property, the lien on it. I'm not sure we're actually doing full liens on those properties like we probably ought to be that are up for collateral.
With the deed of trust that we have over them, so, I mean, we can...
Well, it's locating all the records on that.
I mean, the sheriffs, I thought, keep, the bond office keeps that. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that who has the list of all of them to figure out who, what they've got.
Well, cause Lo, so the treasurer has to keep certain amounts for the CDs that we have on them. So it's, that's not Bob's office, right?
If, if you, if you see issues procedurally, um...
Yeah.
Bring them up so that the bond, the board can, can take action on them.
We're working through that one now.
Just to follow up, do y'all know if anybody ever contacted the gas company, Burke, about going out and redoing that? I'm assuming.
Uh, I'll, let me ask Margaret if she made that call yet.
Nobody ever called me or said I needed to do anything, so I was just following up.
Curious, just information wise, when attorney fees come across, do we see the amount that the judge ordered?
Yes, it's on the, it's on, there's an, there's an order that they have to give us in order to pay that. And that order is attached to, in the UNIS and the TCM.
So we're, we're seeing the final order by the judge?
Yes, yeah, that has to all be signed and everything before they, we will, um, pay that bill.
Okay.
Can you go in yet, Jim, into UNIS and look at the poll?
Mm-hmm. Well, I have the permission to do it, whether or not I have dinner or something.
We'll see it.
Yeah.
Since none of y'all do it, I think most of y'all's passwords are expired. You might not be.
I think I was, I think I was in it not very long ago, but, but, uh, it's, it's not near as, it's not e, near as easy to use if you don't use it every day. It does seem like it would be fairly easy to use, but if I go two weeks without pa, using the password, I forget it, I have to go back and look it up, so...
Just make your passwords all zeros and get in the file. He didn't even raise his eyebrows, that's...
That's cause that's his password, he don't want you to cheat.
Aren't we due for cyber security?
The Higginbotham... Hello?
Mr. Higginham?
Yes.
This is Margaret.
Yes, ma'am.
I have contacted the gas company a couple of times and left a message. I tried to get this morning, the whole time was twenty-six minutes. And I didn't have that much time to hold, so I'm gonna try and get it saturated, but I'm working on it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Margaret, since you, you're the voice of God over my head, can you look at one for me?
Yes.
I was contacted by Cameron Harrison from Lydigan Construction, I heard this week. He said that, do we still have a temporary meter out at the LEC location? Are we still paying for it? Cause I, I know he sent a request to terminate all those temporary services.
Uh, I would have to look, uh, it's for gas or what?
Electric.
Electric, okay.
Yeah.
I will have to look at that, uh, and go through it and check, but you said it's for temporary meter?
Yes.
Okay, I will look at it and make sure and email, um, our contact there. It's, but I'll double check with you first, but I don't want to disconnect the offer.
Okay, yeah, please. Yeah, it would be, would be very good if we disconnected the LEC.
No, it would not.
It, it would have, i- if, if we do have one, it would have like show zero usage, so...
Okay, I'll check on that for you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
No, no problem.
You need the commission on jail standards to have a problem with disconnecting?
Yeah, they do.
There'd be a couple of complaints.
Well, our generator will kick in when we get the generator test.
On the lawyer stuff, is this like payout every two weeks, or do some of these stack them up for a month?
Some of them stack them up and they'll bring us all in, and right now they're all trying to get everything in for twenty-two because they have to get it in, you know, before they, you know...
They'll lose it in a lot of instances. If they don't, the judge won't approve it if...
Right, and so we have a center, they have a, a, a hard de, a date where they have to have all their stuff in for the prior year, otherwise we make them take it to the, to court. Some of them showed up with one, a twenty-one bill. Like this last week, and we said, well, you're gonna have to take that to court, cause we're not gonna pay it. They know, those attorneys know when their hard dates are.
Yeah, fifteen thousand dollars for a two-week pay period is pretty good money, I mean, I...
Right, and a lot of them then stack them up, so...
And, and a lot of them, it can run over. I mean, they could have been working on that since April.
It's true, yeah, I mean, the, but they are trying to get everything in for the year.
Right.
I think last year we did extend that grace period because they couldn't get it all filed with the court because of Nikki, um, the, the accident with Nikki. So, um, we gave it a little grace period on that.
And the only one that's really out there that we deal with in a different manner is Dee Lynn. She's not the promptess to our bills, now, but we haven't used her in quite some time, I guess, or had to use her, thank goodness.
Ironically, the, one of our worst ones at stacking up her bills is Rita Stevens.
Uh, there are a couple of Higginbothams, it's sort of a overlap with what we'll talk about in item number four, but, um, what are the Higginbotham administrative fees for nine fifty, eight fifty? Cause I was looking at this...
Nine fifty, eight fifty, the, so we have a couple of different administrative fees on Higginbotham. We have the flexible spending account that the employees are able to sign up for. There's an admin fee for each employee that's, that's enrolled in that program, and that's what that one is. And then on the HRA that we, we host, there, there's a three dollar check fee for every check that they have to, or issue to, to employ for their reimbursements on that as well.
And three dollar per check, is that, is that, so is that nineteen thousand, is that a whole year, or is that like a...
That's basically an employee, I, in normal, from what I, you know, generally see, an employee will file all their claims at one time. And they'll have like three different direct deposits into their account, one for the coinsurance, one for the deductible, one for the RS. They only charge us one three dollar fee if they do all three over at one time. But they're gonna charge, if they do it one every month, they're gonna charge us three dollars for each month.
I, I think that nineteen thousand, cause it's HRA reimbursements, that's not a, the check fee, that's...
No, that's not a check fee, that's the HRA itself.
Okay.
The check fee is rolled into that nine hundred dollar one that, with the admin fees for the, um, FSA account.
And Jim, we become, everybody on that flex fully accrues the January first or second?
That is correct, so you get, so let's say, ah, you put in twelve hundred dollars on your flex account. It is, is, you get the full twelve hundred January one, but even though we don't take it out, we take out each pay period. So if they terminate and they have used all of that amount, we eat the difference, that's... But if you don't use your flex, we get to keep the difference, that's, it's use it or lose it, so there's a risk on either side of that.
Let the record show, Mr. Muller is here.
I am here. Just in time.
Just in time, we're still on item one, bills.
We gave you some extra ones, but we're doing...
Nikki, I can always count on you. I apologize, I was out in the precinct, didn't work. Yeah, when I checked on my lake crossing after the rain, and all is well, so that's good, yeah.
Cheryl, did you receive that, um, engineering bill from Wichita Valley Water?
Yes.
He was having trouble and I couldn't make my system pull up accounts payable. He was trying to get the, he was making the smock going in correctly or bouncing back to him, and so I just said, send it to Cheryl, Cheryl.
Yeah, um, I did get it, um, I did have some questions on that I needed to follow up. Because I believe in the contract, we had set it up that we would pay those bills directly to the vendor. I just wanna make sure that they're understanding we're gonna pay directly to who billed them, and we aren't gonna send it to Wichita Valley for them, so...
That's correct, and that, that's, they, uh, say a very big thank you for to, for doing that for them, they appreciate that.
Well, it actually gives us more time to pay the bill as well, so as long as we're...
You bet.
Prompt on getting it, and then...
Dean, I guess, has retired, the guy that we've worked with for so long.
Oh.
That, you know, he does hard work and, um, but there is a replacement in the swing already.
Did you find out if Mike got back with him yesterday, Roger was supposed to call?
Uh, no, I told him that.
Yeah, he, he, if he doesn't, we'll follow up again, but I, he said he was laying on his desk, I said, I totally understand.
There was only two, um, outstanding as of yesterday, so...
Yeah, we should maybe get that cleaned up pretty quick.
The two big, the two big controller amounts, those are just, uh, fees we collected that we're sending the state's portion to them?
Yes, that is correct, we do that quarterly.
Okay.
Those are large chunks.
Well, for a very long time, we were, we were grossly behind on those. So when I came in in, in twenty, in August of twenty, and I filed my paperwork with the, with Patty, she said, oh, we haven't sent any money to the treasurer since July of nineteen, when they went live with Odyssey. We didn't get caught up on the state reports until last year. They were just that grossly behind, and now we are up today, everything is good.
I'm sure our state partners appreciate it.
They gave us a lot more grace than they probably should have.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, and what happens, Cheryl, like right now, we're in the process of right cleaning up those JP's. And ten years and older, we're gonna strike. What's the process to clean up the ten-year and older fees that belong to the state in those fees? What happens? I mean, is anything happening, or they just don't get collected and the state doesn't?
So it's, it truly isn't on our system.
Okay.
It really is, um, but it is based off of what we collect, so if we don't collect the fees, they, they aren't really, you know, they don't need to be submitted to the state. It's, it's on cash collections, not on what we've accrued, so...
Do they ever audit that?
No. Not that I've ever heard, I don't think they have time to audit that, that's why it's really a...
There's a three hundred ninety thousand dollar check, Wichita County Treasurer, debt, correct tax, tax deposit into gym and error. What is that? It's item two, three, seven, one, four, one, in the...
Judge, this is Mike, can you hear me?
Yeah, hey, Mike.
I'm doing all right. Um, that is, um, a tax from tax deposit that was put into gym, and it's just transferring it to the correct fund.
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
It's just, uh, you know, a growing pain in learning the, uh, deposits for the new treasurer.
Gotcha, okay. Well, I'm sure you have made no mistakes in these first four weeks in office.
That's why they picked you.
Look at him.
You know, I think he's got a future.
You can't have him.
Thanks, Mike.
I think it's kind of interesting, we're talking about collecting what fines and fees, and you say it's kind of on an honor system. There's just something not right about that, I'm not sure.
It, it, it really is.
But it is, so, you know...
Uh, well, some of it is so subjective, and it allows the JP or the, or the judge to decide what it's going to be and, or whether to dismiss or not dismiss. I mean, it's still on the books in the statutes that, um, some of those offices pay can be tied directly to a commission based on what they, they collect.
Right.
We don't obviously do that, but it's still on the books.
But, and Cheryl, that, what's always bugged me about that is when that paper gets, what, ninety days old, is not very good.
You're not gonna collect it, that's right.
And, and it makes it look like we've got this asset sitting over here that we really don't have.
No, we don't.
I think it'd be good to have that cleaned up and, and more current, because...
We are, yeah, we're really overstating our, our assets.
Yeah, and that could get us in a jam somewhere down the line.
It definitely can, especially if we wanna go out for any debt or bonds.
And then, and then also, I think people see that and they say, oh, well, you know, you, you're gonna collect that, but you're, you're really not, and it's kind of misleading.
Even when we turn it over to Purdue, they're only gonna collect maybe forty percent, and we're on the high end. We're, they use us as a model when they're talking to their other clients, and even that's, yeah.
Yeah.
So much of it is dismissed.
Know what they call blue sky?
Well, and if any of those defendants are in, in another governmental institution as their guest, we're never gonna get that money.
You're good, okay. Chief is here, so let's move to item number two, discuss and review jail maintenance projects and work orders. Chief, do you have anything?
Uh, we are having a problem with the server room, which is a very big issue, because when the control room goes down, uh, we can't open any doors. Uh, they are working on that, and I, I forget the electric company, Brendan, do you know?
No.
I don't mean to throw you under the bus, but, I mean, these guys really don't have a lot to do with it, uh, it's not an IT problem, it's an air conditioning problem. It's not, the air conditioner is tripping. One of them's faulty, and it has been turned off, uh, but because it's cool right now, we're in the winter, it's not, it's not gonna be an issue. But this summer, if we don't get that replaced, it could become an issue, but the electric company's already on it. So that's the only big issue.
What's the matter, Patrick, with the air conditioner burning up?
Yes, that one of them, uh, is, uh, was, uh, shorting, and it throws, keeps throwing the breaker for both of them. And when it, it was, uh, ninety-seven degrees the other day in the server room, and, you know, I don't know what temperature servers can handle, but apparently that wasn't good.
Did we not even finish the, the secondary?
Just FYI, this is not the server room at the LEC, it is a subroom in the control room, it is not the server room. It's just, it's a subroom where some of the control systems are, and the, the control system for all the security cameras and others, and it's in that room, it's not the main server.
It's the one adjacent to the control room.
Correct. Okay, thank you, Brendan.
Whew, okay.
Yeah, the, the server room itself, it does not have air conditioning issues.
So would it behoove us to purchase a small portable AC unit for in there? I mean, I, I don't see us putting in a secondary AC, but if we had a...
A mini split would be more conducive, cause I don't know where you'd vent it.
Do you not already have an air conditioner unit in there, it's broke, why don't you fix it?
No, I get that, but, but in case of an emergency, if, if we ever go down here.
Yeah, there's actually, there's actually two in there.
Is there two?
The second one, yeah, one of them failed, and it, because it, uh, shorted, it threw the breaker and turned both of them off. That's what caused the problem.
Great electric plant here.
Well, there's, there's still a backup.
Yeah, we can still run on one, uh, but if we get into a hundred and ten degree summer, you know, there's, it might become an issue if we don't get the other one, but they're already working on getting the other one.
But are these units, uh, just help me, because it's not our first issue there, Patrick, with the air conditioners. They should last longer than three years, uh, that's just ridiculous. And are these, uh, trains, or what are they?
They are trains, yeah, everything, everything out there is trained.
We, we need to be blowing somebody's phone up.
Is it an electrical issue to the actual AC unit?
I think it sounds like to me the compressor or motor's failing and it's causing that breaker to trip.
And it's probably something covered by warranty, so it's just gotta...
It, it is, but it's not costing us anything, it's just that something broke on one of them and causing it to short, and because of the short, it tripped.
Yeah, I sent you an email to the warranty group, so, but I didn't realize that was, that was in the server room.
So it's being fixed, so we're good, we don't...
Right, yeah, yeah.
Well, thankfully it's winter.
Uh, there was a request that came from y'all, your staff, to purchase a progress toolset.
Yes, sir.
We, we went ahead and purchased one globally, so for all maintenance. We, instead of having one that was limited to half inch and three-quarter inch, we went ahead and got the full set.
Oh, okay.
So we'll have one for y'all's use, our use, everyone's use.
Okay, uh, when is that supposed to come in, do you know?
It's been ordered, it's been ordered, Margaret.
Soon, soon.
I actually just sent you an email, Commissioner Bechel, it should be here, uh, next Tuesday or Wednesday.
That's great, that, that'll save us from having to call plumber every time we...
Oh, yeah, uh, do you know, have y'all worked out where you wanna keep it for a majority of time?
I don't care, just as long as we have a global lead to use across the county, I don't really care who has it in their possession, as long as everyone can get to it.
Okay.
Surprised we didn't have one. But city didn't buy one till lucky year nine, two years.
And just to comment, we do have two separate air conditioning systems in the LEC that run on separate power and separate, completely separate systems in the main server.
Yeah.
And we tested it a month ago, so we are good there.
That's why I was really confused, but, okay.
Anything else on jail maintenance or record?
I'm aware of other network, rocking and rolling out there.
Okay, good deal, thank you. All right, item number three, receive status report on salaries and overtime.
Are you, are you Victor today? I don't know where you're looking.
We guess they'd have received the email already, I'm, to my knowledge, we didn't have any major problems or reviews, we'll tell you all this time, so...
Well, there is.
I think he was standing around.
Yeah, he was, he was making that.
Cheryl or Victor, I have a question, I, they don't ever get overtime, and it's not, it's a minimal amount, but Dawn is, is on there for overtime for three dollars and forty-one cents. We don't know why, but the other is with her time clock, it's, instead of being a quarter hour, it always shows like two, like, three forty-two.
To the minute.
Or three forty-three, or, yeah, so, uh, I don't wanna take her three dollars from her, but she shouldn't have any, so...
That's, I mean, that's...
That's just how she is.
Well, no, it's not, it's not just how she is, the time clock's set up on a rounding, can be set up on a rounding or not set up on a rounding either way. But there's also rules as far as taking breaks and stuff, if you, if you take a break and don't come back in with an allotted amount of time and default out the rounding.
Yes.
So if you do that at most time and take a meal break instead of a clock out, if you don't come back in within the hour of five or seven minutes or whatever it is, it'll default to rounding.
Okay, so like if it was forty hours and four minutes, then she's paid over.
She's gonna get paid over that, because we, we export out of the time clock and we avoid it, we just, we don't go messing with people's times.
Yep.
So if it's over forty hours, that's, that's what it is.
Okay.
Looks like our jail numbers have leveled out at a little better number, which is good.
As far as the census goes or the overtime?
Yeah, the census, it's the numbers.
Victor, what, your transfer, how much are we, it looks like we are really increased what our past, um, transfer of payroll dollars versus our current, I guess this is our first real payroll, right?
This is our first real payroll with all of the raises.
Cause it's significantly up from...
We, we have the increase in the payroll for all, across the board, and the ARPA for the jail was restructured to be on a flat amount.
Right, per...
All year long versus la, last year, they tried to do some type of step plan, that created a lot of chaos towards the end of the year, so, um, this year we went straight to a straight plan, so they're getting more of it up front than they are at the back end.
Yep.
Will this remain, like this is one point four, and we're in the neighborhood of eight or nine hundred usually?
Yeah, this should probably remain constant through... When you're doing, you know, three to five percent for employee, um...
Yeah. Has a...
The numbers are, uh, quite a bit, quite a bit higher. Let's see, did we have a holiday in that one? We did, didn't we?
Yeah, one holiday.
One?
Yeah.
Okay.
Interesting, when you look down there at the bottom line, then the, the total, totals were quite a bit higher, and yet your total calls per hour actually slipped back some, did you see that? Study that a little bit. Well, holiday does make a difference, didn't it?
It does.
Cheryl, who does our, uh, work comp, uh, report as far as what we pay based on payroll? Who, who oversees that as far as what our allotment is?
Well, as far as workers' comp, for what we're paying for workers' comp, we do like a, a, a pre and full report in September of every year, based on...
Everybody's job needs and...
And then at the end of the, at the end of the year, we do like a true-up... And then at the end of the, at the end of the year, we do like a true-up to, to kinda test out and then we either get, you know, the, the amount we pay quarterly is based on that pre-report that we do and the amount we do at the end of the year, we true-up and which kinda determines whether or not we still conditionally owe them or we get a reverse.
Right.
And that workers' comp rate is different, it's based on whether you're an admin or whether you're a jailer or a SO, cause obviously their risk is higher than, say Debbie who's.
Right, but, but a jailer, we're not paying workman comp based on a, let's say we've got a forty-five thousand dollar jailer, but with overtime, he's ninety thousand annually, we're only paying on the forty-five thousand.
We're gonna pay on the straight overtime portion of it as well.
Straight overtime, not time and a half.
Not the halftime portion of it, we're paying on their base salary and their straight portion of it.
So that raises it.
That does raise it.
Quite a bit. Okay.
It should theoretically wash out because you're not paying them, the employee would have paid there, didn't he, the overtime?
You're paying on the FTE.
Yeah.
Yes.
What?
So, your, your.
Your full-time equivalent.
Your person who's having to work that overtime, they're having to work that because we're understaffed and so you're not paying, you're not paying workers' comp on that worker we don't have. And so since you're not paying in an extra, on the extra time and a half.
It's relatively.
I think those were both washed.
If that one person getting overtime is equivalent to two full, full time.
It would be different if you were paying on the.
If we had both, yeah.
Or if you. Any other questions, comments on that item? No. Okay. Victor, thank you. All right, item number four. Are you know what, Chief, are you gonna talk about the marshal deal? Okay, then we will not skip ahead to you on number five. Number four, discussions with the auditor's office on the employee benefits consulting agreement with Higginbotham. I, I've, I've asked for this to be upon just for some information for my sake on, as I was reviewing this, this agreement, uh, had some questions pop up and thought it might be good for, I knew it would be good for me, but it might be good for everyone to talk through them a little bit, so. I, I noticed as I was looking through the agreement that we are not consulting, there was no consulting fee in the agreement. And so then I went and looked back and it looks like we are only paying, we're not paying, they are doing this for the commission is the only fee that they, that Higginbotham gets for those voluntary extra, uh, benefits, is that right?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. Now that's separate from the administration fee they get for doing our FSA and that you talked about earlier, right, Corey?
Yeah, I haven't seen what agreement we're looking at here.
Okay.
Is there a fee associated with this agreement?
There's not, and that's, that's why I was confused when I saw the.
So, we've never really had a signed agreement with Higginbotham that I'm aware of. They just always, Lance always been basically our consultant, she's always just stepped in and, like she helps us in, in, usually around the opening enrollment time. They help us coordinate our, our additional benefits, like our dentals and visions. They go out, they're, they're willing to go out and RFP for us or, you know, send out for our rates, make sure we get rates, our rates correct every year. And, uh, they consult us with our open enrollment area and stuff like that, but, and basically, we've never really had an agreement or payment schedule, even, even prior to them handling our Higginbotham, we never paid them, we, even when our FSA account was some, was with another company, they still were basically our consultant. They never really had a charge or anything, we not ever paid them until we went to, to them directly to handle our FSA, so.
So when they come and help us during open enrollment period, do they send a separate invoice for that?
We won't get a bill at all from them.
We've never been billed from them.
But now, it is the third party that's doing a lot of the work, um, under Higginbotham's oversight. So Colonial is gonna be up here doing that for the most part, which our provider.
For the extra benefits, for the.
Yeah, but any snags, Higginbotham's gonna work out and like, uh, it's very common for Louanne to go to my precinct barn. She, she does that sign up, um, and I know she does others too, but for the ones here that, uh, for, that Cheryl's group sets up, they're usually our vendor for the most part, so, does it put all the onus on them to do the work?
Okay.
But I wonder, have we, are y'all privy to what Higginbotham bids as far as, you know, we've been with this same bunch here and I was telling the judge recently, I, I'm irritated, I've worked through three, um, deals last year, I guess it was last year, wasn't it? And, you know, the company wants, uh, information that's over my doctor's head, but wants me to get it for them so they can conclude the claim. And which is codes, code numbers for the billing.
Is it Blue Cross Blue Shield that you're dealing?
No, it's Colonial.
It's like the short-term.
The short-term or whatever.
Right, accidental or, um, cancer or whatever.
I don't think that Higginbotham will bid that out unless we ask them to, so I think that's really what it is, is that we have chosen to keep those companies and we have not asked that to be bid out in any way to compare to say Aflac or whatever. I, I will say Colonial typically is the better of the companies, but, you know, e- every year can be different, you know, their customer service.
When I brought that up to, um, them, well, one of the things I was, um, stressing over is that my attachments that I was going through the portal and sending was not making it. And so then we resorted to printing off hard copies and mailing them in because I was continually getting, it appeared that they were attaching and going fine, but then I'd get notices, hey, you haven't provided what you need to provide. And we began to mail them in and then we'd get instructions back, hey, we need the codes for these procedures here and, uh, after learning what they were talking about, I discussed this with Colonial when they registered me back up again. And, um, he was saying, yeah, that's, that'd become kind of the new policy. He had to recently do it on a, a short-term disability he had or something. I said, well, that doesn't change the fact I really don't like it and I, if I had to do it on my health insurance, I'd really be irritated. And I, I don't know, I don't know what corners are cutting, um.
Yeah, and I, I'm gonna bet all of them are doing that, but the, I mean, if we want to go out for an RFP and have all of those looked at again, I'm sure, I mean, we can do that. We just, they aren't gonna bid it out unless we ask them to.
Right. And anytime I get Louanne involved, they resolve the problem, but if I go to them directly myself, it's always an issue. And I've had four total claims and they've each one been an issue. It's just not like submitting it and I assume they've talked to the doctor, but they don't do that.
No, they take those codes off of your EOB.
And Sonya, y'all don't have any role right now as far as if Jeff or another, or an employee has an issue like that? Y'all don't play any role right now as far as they going to you to ask you to help play that middleman role, is that right?
I do have a lot.
Oh, you do?
She, she has started.
I do have a lot of people that come in for short, short-term disability paperwork, um, and asking, requesting help to get it. As a matter of fact, I just had a phone call before we came up here on someone who's doing short-term disability and, um, they did, the doctor's office had went on ahead and sent the physician part, um, to Colonial without the rest of the paperwork. And so now they're being stuck trying to get the physician section. So, they had to have the complete package, but yes, I do get those come in and they request assistance and I do assist them, um, to get that out.
Jeff, you should just give it over to Sonya.
Well, and going to the hospital for those codes, it took me a while to find out even because the doctor office didn't have any idea what I was talking.
It should be, it should be the billing code on your EOB or your invoice.
I was gonna say, a lot of times it's whoever's doing the coding will put an improper code in and that's where the trouble starts.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of times the billing person at your physician's office, cause they've got, you know, a booklet basically. And if they put in one that's not recognized or allowed, then that can throw everything into.
And I'll show you, Sonya, I'll bring you my paper, I've set it down and just quit messing with it.
You know, every bit of that medical billing should fall under the, could we make this anymore?
That's right.
It's not very key work out there. I get stuff in the mail and I have no idea what it, what it is.
People go to school just to do medical billing.
Yeah, it's, it is.
Just wait till AI's doing it all and can't talk to a person.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
The IRS.
Well, well, I can't make anything match, you know, that's, that's, I, I like to kinda lay things out and say, okay, you know, this deal paid here and I paid this and, you know, and you can't, there's no way to get, you can't get there.
We charged you this, your insurance paid this, we are allowed to charge your insurance up to this.
Yeah.
Here's what you owe, but don't send us a bill, cause this isn't final.
I've had a couple of them over the last couple of years on something I've had done and you never get a bill. And then you get a demand for payment letter.
And months later.
Yeah, would you send me, if you'll send me an invoice, I'll pay it, but I, you know, that just drives me nuts when I see that.
On, on the Higginbotham agreement, so we did not, at least recently, have, they do not serve as our consultant for going out on general health insurance benefits, for example, that's not, that's not a service that we have them do, is that right?
Right.
Right, cause we have our health insurance through TAC, so they, they, TAC usually handles all of that.
And Jim, those TAC, the TAC personnel, it's like Cheryl was saying, I don't know what they pay, but apparently good because they're crackerjacks when it comes to answering health insurance questions.
Yeah, and I, what I, what I meant was not for the management of the health insurance benefits themselves, that would expect TAC to do that.
Just the.
I meant as far as going out and comparing different, different alternatives for, this is what it costs and this is the services provided and all of that.
Are you talking about health insurance?
Yes.
No, cause that is all through TAC. They get the best plan and it's all based on that. Now, if we can leave TAC, I don't recommend that. That will cost us significantly more when we were self-insured or when we tried to manage it ourselves. We have been with TAC and they get the best rate and it's, and the best plan and they do that for every county in the state. That is part of TAC, now you can choose not to be, but.
What, so the.
Everyone in TAC has Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Right, I guess my question is, so TAC is serving in a consultant role then? As far as they're, they are being our broker for health insurance.
For Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Not, not for Blue Cross Blue Shield, they're serving as our, but they're going out and comparing that, you know, United, Blue Cross, and every year, bro, essentially serving as our broker? No, they're not.
No, not, not on the instance that you're talking, if we were looking at other insurance companies.
We would have to leave.
We would have to leave TAC.
Right.
And we have had the discussion and, and yes, Higginbotham has gone out and done, you know, certain comparisons for our other benefits and they were willing to do our health insurance as well. The problem is, is if we, we would have to go out into the open market for one, we would probably likely get a cheaper rate year one or possibly year two, but year three, we're gonna see a major increase, cause the open market increases quite a bit faster than TAC does. Because TAC is, TAC has over two hundred counties under their service. And so we're kind of in this pool where if we have a good year, our rates kinda stay down because we had a good year, but they, they don't go as low because
Right.
Some other counties may have had a bad year, but if we have, and we have historically until the past year or year and a half, that we've actually done fairly decent. Historically, we've been one of the worst counties as far as health insurance. And we haven't seen quite the, you know, the open market sees a twenty to twenty-five percent increase, we usually see a five to ten percent increase because we're covered within the pool of two hundred counties versus if we go out in the open market, we're covered in a pool of one county.
TAC's our underwriter, not Blue Cross Blue Shield. Blue Cross Blue Shield is really just our administrator. We just, we send the claims to them process, but TAC, TAC is our pool, that's, that's our underwriter.
Right, so if we wanted to be with another company, we would have to leave TAC.
Yeah, TAC's not going out and comparing insurance companies and they're not having multiple offers. TAC is offering you Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's why they're offering you, they're, they're not going out and.
Now, they probably on the backside probably check, but Etna's a horrible group, I would never recommend that. When our teachers were on Etna, would they got screwed?
I don't think we really technically have Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have Blue Cross Blue Shield as an administrative.
They're a third-party administrator.
They're a third-party administrator for our pool, I think TAC assumes all, all the risk.
Uh, I don't know about that.
Yeah, I don't.
This is getting a little beyond, Higginbotham does not do that as part of their service, is that right?
That is, that is correct.
No, that wasn't on you, that was on me taking us down that.
That's why I was, but I may be wrong.
Okay.
Wouldn't be the first time today.
But I, I can't say enough good about my experience with Louanne. Yeah.
They are excellent to work with.
Someone different, um.
They are extremely helpful.
They handle a lot of work that I don't even think that, between my office and Tanya's, that we could handle. They, they really are a great facilitator with that, so.
And Louanne will do the one-on-one, I mean.
She, and she's fast responding.
She goes through the proper channels and I just listen from the other office and when I've had it, I call Louanne and get an answer like that.
Okay.
Sit on the whole stack of EOBs and say, figure it out.
Well, and that has, from, that had been my understanding too, that, uh, that they were doing a lot of stuff for us. And then I got the agreement and didn't see much of it in there, what we were paying for it. And so that's kinda why I wanted to have this discussion.
And, and I think it was that their auditors had realized that they didn't have a signed agreement with us to kinda.
Okay.
It's just a formalization.
When do we recapture the co-pays? Isn't that about this time of year?
Yeah, you can do that throughout your year as you are, yes.
But when, when's our cutoff? It's March.
Is it March?
Yeah, the cutoff on the HRA is, is, uh, March thirty-first, but, um, we got the reports in yesterday. Um, and we have a scheduled meeting for this afternoon to go over some of that information, so, uh, and then we'll have to go back and do some comparisons with what's already been paid, but you would likely be receiving an email sometime in the near future if, if you're eligible or qualified.
But you, you'll know who's eligible then, right?
You'll let us know, Corey.
Right, that was really my question.
Somebody, somebody in benefits will let you know.
You, I know y'all have done that in the past and boy, that, that helps, cause that's another one of those areas.
Yeah, and.
Just the average person has a hard time keeping up with.
We're not, we're not able to go very far into that until we get that, that final report.
Yeah.
And so, we got it yesterday, so.
No need to have to do it several times.
Yeah, and it'll, it'll take a little bit of time to put everything together, but, yeah.
Good, good.
Okay, thank y'all for humoring me on this, uh, this item. Any other questions or issues? Move on to the agreement with the US Marshals for housing inmates under chargeable rates. Jeff and I had a good discussion with, uh, the sheriff and his team on this to, to get some information. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like, so we've had the same rate with the feds for the inmates that we house for them for.
Three years?
Four years?
For four years in June.
That's right, it'll be four years in June. Uh, and, uh, Chief Rutledge is, he actually was pretty far along the path of getting the new paperwork in towards the end of last year to get an increased rate, uh, this significantly increased rate. But then the pay raises would have thrown all of the worksheet calculations out of whack, so he started over with the, the new, the new worksheet and he thinks he should be able to get that done in the next couple of weeks. And he was explaining to us that it's not just a pick a number out of midair, negotiated rate, send it to the US Marshal and ask them to approve it. You do a worksheet which you're basically showing the cost. You do a worksheet which you're basically showing the cost you're incurring and what they are and they're basing their, uh, they're basing their rate that they, they pay us on what it's costing us. And so, uh, he's in the middle of doing that and again, it should be a pretty significant increase cause the cost of taking care of inmates has gone up so much in the last four years.
Yeah, our medical insurance and salaries along should drive it.
We need to, you know, tackle on our out of county rates need to go up as well, probably pretty significantly. And that really is subjective to us, but we're, we're charging, we're not charging enough to cover.
You mean for the Clay counties and whatever, whoever's using our.
Yeah.
For housing out, yeah.
For housing out of county.
Yeah.
We're, we're way below, um, many other counties, I mean, we're.
Are we below what we're paying if we have to send someone out?
We might be actually, it may actually be cheaper to house that inmate somewhere else than it is to house them out.
Well, if, if you could find the room, that's, that, that's.
That is always the cap.
Everybody's got the same challenge as we do.
Patrick, are you holding a file that has all of our, um, agreements for the other counties around us that are friends with y'all that wanna have that ability?
I'm not aware of that, but I, I, if, if there's one to be had, Captain Patterson has it.
Okay.
Cause I think we're at sixty-five dollars a day and.
And do we do, Cheryl, like you, you capture the payroll in such a manner that's easy to put into hour of operation and you've got a three hundred and sixty-five, uh, times twenty-four hour operation, but do we do anything that actually is putting together the cost of, um, operation? The sheer cost that says per hour of operation, we are expending blank in total outlay for the lights being on at L E C.
Um, no, we haven't, but we, you know, we could probably put that together.
We may not wanna know.
We may not.
Well, cause I mean, you're, you're, you're talking about the total expense divided by number of hours in a year.
Absolutely, it's really just formula based.
See, we, we, that makes sense to me because that's what we used to track productivity. We, we knew that all trucks running and, and insurance and building maintenance and whatever it was, salaries all rolled in created a price per hour.
Yes.
And we then took that price per hour and marked it up.
Correct.
To make sure that we, and then we always.
You wanted, you wanted to find out what your overhead cost was in order to figure out how much to charge to make a profit or break even.
Yeah. Well, cause really in, 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 very similar to the situation you're talking about, probably one of the things that we don't figure into that is depreciation on our, on our facility.
Yeah, but we don't, I mean.
But I mean, it could be a major expense to us because it has to be paid for and, uh.
Yes, the expense has to be paid for and we record the depreciation on the books, but.
Not a cash out, well, it's just cash outlay when you pay the bond. But it's, it is a cost and if you're gonna get a true cost, you, you know, I think a lot of times you'll see a small business fall into this trap. And that is, we don't figure in that depreciation and all of a sudden we have to replace our fleet and like, what happened? I think that's one of the big pitfalls that I've seen in.
Well, yeah, cause your vehicle starts out at sixty thousand, but it's not worth sixty in five years.
Yeah.
It's fully depreciated, it's worth zero.
We're rocking along, we're cash flowing, everything looks pretty good till it comes time to do a major retail and then, oh, you know, we don't, we don't want anything set aside for that.
That is where it is very crucial that we get a complete inventory audit and that is the goal for twenty-four. Doing it in twenty-three is pointless because we have so much construction and stuff is stuck in every creamy in the world to try to move things around and twenty-four, we're gonna have to do a full, complete inventory.
We're gonna need everybody.
What do we have, what do we not have, what needs to come off the books? You know, and we have been cleaning up some of that, that's obvious, like the bag of concrete mixture of nineteen eighty, we probably don't.
Right, are we gonna have to count our rocks on the gravel pile?
No, 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 that's not, that's not, that's not, that's a liquid asset that kind of just works, it's current, it's.
It's good business.
That, that's a tool that department heads could use for planning out beyond just the next budget year, then you can do.
Right, things that we need to, we're gonna need to replace. I was very shocked to see that we actually do still have a V C R D V D combo in the C D A's office and I have seen it and it's still worse. But, yes, we have a lot of.
Right next to the eight track player.
Yeah, but there are still a lot of things, you know, we, we worked on it last year, we'll still continue to work on it, but we need to do a full inventory audit in twenty-four and tag those assets and really start.
So what is the gasp being depreciation time on a new building construction?
New building construction, uh, thirty-nine and a half years.
Thirty-nine and a half years?
Yeah, thirty-nine years, thirty-nine years on the.
So the time we pay off the bond, the building, L E C building will be fully depreciated.
Yeah.
Practically.
So it'd be, we'll start getting a new one ready. No, I mean.
It should last longer.
You gotta, you gotta reinvest back into the building for reinvest capital.
And that is where it is super crucial that we take care of our building. So while it is an expense, a little bit of expense every year adds up so we don't have to replace an eight, eight million dollar building.
Yeah.
I can see the headline at six o'clock, county judge says prepare for new judge.
No, 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 no.
No, it's just, you, you have to take care, continue to take care of things or are we getting the, where we're at now? Trying to replace everything?
Yes.
Right.
But we, you know, really though, you start thinking about what we've done in the last several years and Mark, I give you a lot of credit for this cause I know you've worked directly on it. I, I'm telling you, we're gonna have our facilities in the best shape they've been in in a long time as far as being able to function and do business and, I mean, it's been a long time coming, but we're gonna be in much better shape than I've seen it since I've been here. We, we've touched a lot of things and we got a few more to do, but still, we're, we're gonna have an operating facility and that's something to kind of be proud of really. And, and most of it, we didn't, you know, we didn't wreck it and start over, we, we, you know, reserved what we had and I think there's some merit to that, so.
So we should have a U S Marshals thing.
Yeah, so any, uh, any other questions or on the U S Marshal bill? Okay, all right, and we'll hit the last item of the day, which should not necessarily be the shortest, uh, review personnel policy.
But it will be the most.
But it will be the most.
Tony, you sent us a new email?
Yeah, Wednesday, Wednesday.
Okay. Are we at five-ten today, is that where we're starting?
I was just saying, do we have a special rate for housing another county sheriff?
Who would have ever thought that was?
That was a question extra special rate.
That's kind of what I'm hearing.
One of the questions on, uh, what's the game show, uh, uh, was, uh, what, uh, would you find in a, a very high level jail cell? And, uh, it was all kind of, you know, big screen TV and all that, but the best one was a comfortable bed. I thought, I thought we had comfortable beds, but I guess maybe we didn't.
So yesterday during our reasonable suspicion training, there were.
That's a good, a shell.
There were a few items that we noted that we need to go back on at some point and adjust in our policy to meet federal guidelines correctly, so. Not to back up today, just to throw that out there, but just some things that we learned yesterday in the training that we need to be, we need to change our wording a little bit.
And I'll do that after, I spent all day with them yesterday, so.
Oh, sorry, I missed the first.
With TAC, when, when we had our reasonable suspicion training yesterday, so there were, there were some things that they brought up in policy that we really should modify how it's worded, so.
And you're, you're gonna incorporate those and?
Yes, yeah, yep, I shall.
All right, five-ten, page sixty-six. Excused other duties, starting with jury duty.
They're here in the building, they should be able to do this.
What page do you do it?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, okay. It'll be around there, this may be not the most recent.
Should it be spelled out that if, if it is, if you come to jury duty and you're dismissed during the day? You come, show up at nine, at nine o'clock and, and you're released, you should return back to work or you?
I think so, because a lot of times they're released at nine and have to call five.
Party time.
Yeah.
Cause quite literally went to jury summons early, or late last year where we were there for ten minutes and they released the entirety of the jury and there were five or six county employees there with me, so.
They should be, it's going back to work.
Yeah. So we, we need to spell that out in some way.
How about if employees released from jury duty or placed on standby slash call-in, they're to return to work during those hours, during the regular working hours.
Yeah. Will, will I be paid jury time for hours that they're not sort of actually serving? I don't know, how, how about the wordsmith?
The, I hold that thought one second and I left the other, cause I lost my train of thought. But Patrick's new pickup, that, and others, who is making sure they're put on insurance?
They should be relaying that to the, to Melvin's office, who is the representative of insurance.
Do you know Melvin if that's happening? Like, for example, I know I've dropped the ball, the gopher plows probably not made it to you and if I tore it up tomorrow, it wouldn't be on our insurance. Can you give it to Melvin?
I send it to TAC and they put it on their list up there and they send me Melvin's on the list.
We probably ought to, since he is the, the rep, directly with TAC on insurance, everything should flow through his.
I do think though, that the way it's worked has been pretty effective because they keep, I mean, it's a huge spreadsheet they keep and they just do. If you want it to, cause if you wanna send it to me, I'm gonna send it to them, I mean, or, I mean, if you want me to take over her due, what they're currently doing.
But she's only doing for him, not for the entire county, so.
Well, Nancy was. Is that no matter?
Right, you're just playing the precinct, so if the S O.
Oh, civil case, divorce case, non-involved county, we just pay them no matter if they go to.
So that we don't find ourselves totaling a truck that's not.
Well, my understanding was Nancy had a list, I don't have a list of any of that. Nancy has it, somebody, not me, I'd have to, I'll tie it down. Do you have it? Okay, so that's what I mean.
But you don't have county wide, you just have.
Yeah, she does.
But it has everything on there.
All the, all the, the drones, that everything of that nature was being, my understanding was being kept by Nancy and Debbie and Morgan on this, now I work. Or it could be a civil deal that's not involved the county at all. I mean, normally you'd have to take off work to go to something that's not police. Yeah, they're.
I thought it, it should be.
That's a, that's a good question. I asked a question on subpoenas.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'm gonna ask.
Is that, is that a county involvement subpoena or is that any kind of subpoena, cause you have a.
I, you know, if you're going with a child custody case, that's, that's on you.
I think we need to specify, that is a subpoena for county business.
I mean, I don't know though, you ignore a subpoena and you're, I mean, you could be, I mean, like, sentence may come arrest them, I guess.
You're not saying ignore it, you're saying that the county's not liable to pay you.
Get subpoenaed, so if you're subpoenaed in a divorce hearing for your personal or someone else's.
Let's say your wife's being sued over a civil matter and they've subpoenaed you in Dallas.
We shouldn't pay the police.
We're not paying you to, but you should have to take off work, I would think.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
So, uh, should an employee be served with a subpoena related to their county employment?
There, there is.
That should do it.
That should do it.
Yes. Um, I had a thing on five-ten too, um, non-exempt whose total hours plus jury duty for the week exceed forty hours shall be paid for any excess hours above forty. Shall be paid or not, that's not working time, that should, that should be, shall not be paid.
Yeah.
Is that on point, on point two?
Yes.
Your, yeah, your, your time served on the jury should not equate to working overtime at all.
Correct.
Unless you're, unless it's, unless you're, well.
We might.
Unless you're a witness on a, on a case or something, but that wouldn't be jury duty.
But it's not jury time, yeah.
We could do straight time, but it's not eligible for overtime, so we'll just need to clarify.
If they come in after they've served all day on the jury and they work at night, then they're, they're just working straight time.
It should be straight time, so we just need to clarify that.
And there's not very many times when you'd get held over, but it can happen, I guess, and I.
Yeah, I think it's saying that is just not clear.
It's not clear.
How about excess hours at the end, excess hours due to, um, jury duty will be paid at straight time? Is that working?
Say that again?
Excess hours due to jury duty will be paid at straight time.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, but this is, I think this is what this was trying to get at, is that if, that's fine if somebody works thirty-eight excess hours, or thirty-eight hours and eight hours of jury duty, then those extra six hours are being paid at straight time. If someone works forty-eight hours in addition to eight hours of jury duty, those, that, that extra eight hours is gonna be paid a time and a half.
Correct.
Right.
And I'm afraid that that language makes it sound like that's not the case.
Does this work on that one?
Yeah, that needs some, some wordsmithing.
I mean, I think that the two bullet points.
Uh, below it.
Capture that to Commissioner Beecham's point, the weirdness comes in.
In the first.
The first.
The first sentence.
I, I mean, it is confusing, I don't really know a way to clarify it better than what's there.
I, I think what's there is good because it, right from there, it goes into if they're work hours or if they're jury duty hours.
Yeah, I mean, it, I thought it's pretty clear, if you read the bullet point.
And, and it may look bad because the bullet points on the next page, which may change when Joyce does her magic.
Well, that would only be if they came in to, like, do something they had to do after hours.
But.
So like if you, okay, you work eight to five and you just happen to serve on a jury till seven, when something got tied, those extra two hours that you served on the jury wouldn't have anything to do with your job.
No.
Right, and, and that's what it's saying, but the non-exempt people are gonna be mostly, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be required to work after five, so they wouldn't come in after jury duty.
So if they walk down the hall and, and answer, answer their emails after they were released from jury duty, they would get paid.
That's work time.
That's work time, that's totally separate.
So a jailer, it's calling for jury duty, have to serve on a jury for ten hours that week. Then, because we're so short staffed, we still, we need them to come in and, and work excess, so they end up working forty hours still on top of that ten hours of jury duty. That's, this is saying that you're getting paid for. That's, this is saying that you're getting paid for fifty hours of work this week, but all fifty of those hours are gonna be at straight time.
Right.
They're not mutually exclusive. You're not actually at work when you're on jury duty. So you're not, you're not getting time credit for working for an overtime.
Right, it should be straight time. Now, if he worked forty-five hours in the jail and tonight's a jury, he would get five hours of time and a half.
And then get five hours of overtime.
Right.
And fifty hours of.
Does time clock, does it have a code for jury duty? It does, so that should be automated and done, okay.
Yes.
Who would've thought?
Well, we're very nice because most employers in the private sector, if you keep your jury pay, then you don't get paid for jury duty. You have to sign over your six dollars or your forty dollars. It really, what it is, is it's the verification that you actually served.
Yeah.
And Tanya, on the clarification.
I don't think I should have served on a jury anyway.
I think you also need that related to the county employment in sentence number two as well. So employees with a subpoena related to their county employment will be paid their regular salary. Just need it in bullet spots.
Got it.
We're making good pace today, y'all. Half a page and fifteen minutes. In the travel time section, is all of that just laying out what the fair labor standards act guidelines are?
Yeah, it's in compliance with the IRS and the FSLA.
Okay.
So. So five ten dash six. If we're. Joe normally reports to precinct one bar, but he's going to school in Vernon for CDL training. We're sending him to a secondary task, so all that, what that's saying is that that travel time going to the alternative work site is paid at this.
If it's over with a.
No, it's saying, it's, it should be saying that your travel time from precinct one to the school, that's travel time.
That's travel time.
Right.
And you're, you're, that's considered work time.
That's work time, but if he goes, we would have to do the calculation on that. If he skips going to precinct one first.
And drives straight.
And drives straight to the other, because it's really, because any time from home to work is not.
Because we've had that question come up, so.
Yeah.
The time from your primary location of work to your secondary, that's travel time. But from home to primary is not.
Home, or home to alternative side, we'd have to calculate that.
We would have to, yeah.
So instead of showing up at precinct one, it's went straight from home to Vernon.
Yeah. We would have to.
We'd have to calculate that.
Yeah. It, it would be a pain. My suggestion would be go to your first one and then go.
But if you live in Elektra, wouldn't that be? I mean, it's, we run into that.
Mm-hmm. I don't know where they were picking the truck up from, but they went to one precinct, pick up the truck, then went to another precinct to pick up somebody, then they went to another precinct. When the third person lived in Elektra going to Vernon and the first people worked on this side of town, but they wanted time going from precinct one, I mean, it's just, and I wanted to say, you got paid forty-five hundred dollars to get your CDL, how about zip it? But I didn't say that.
But we did work.
Amen.
Yeah, we worked, we worked through that and so, yeah.
We may, I think we did cover this already in the reimbursement section, but the travel time and travel away from home and community. Do we reimburse, what's the policy for reimbursing for meals that are part of the travel time? I leave at ten o'clock in the morning, get to my destination at three, that lunch that I got in the middle is not reimbursed.
There's a, there's a certain hour, amount of hours you have to be gone before you're eligible for the meals they have to kick in, so.
And it's, it's four hours, and I will tell you, that came up also with the drivers that were going to Vernon. They thought their lunch should be paid for when they always take their lunch to work. And my thing was, you either go to McDonald's or you, this is part of your work day and we're not paying you for lunch.
Daytime, daytime travel where you can come and go and return on the same day, those meals, if you are eligible, are a taxable transaction. You have to be gone overnight to be gone.
So what I'm talking about is overnight travel, so.
Yeah, overnight, so you gotta be gone like four hours before then you, then the next meal you would be kicked in and, you know, so dinner is what you would get, your first meal, not lunch.
Okay.
And any meals provided during your conference, you don't get any.
Right, yeah, that, that was just unclear.
Regardless if you take that meal or not.
That.
Are you still, that comes off your per deal?
Yeah.
Any, anything on the travel time section? All right, five eleven is military leave.
That is all also standard with FSLA.
And on eleven two, Tanya, are you getting those orders? Do you know of anyone really right now?
From the sheriff's department and, you know, and I did learn that, that when they're on military leave, I thought it was a year, I can't remember the exact numbers, but it's five years you can hold their job for them. So we have a test gate going right now, but I keep thinking, why, never mind. So yes, I do get them.
But if that's critical, mission, critical employment, we we can fill the position and then just assure them a job when they.
That is correct.
Right. And it has to be at the salary they would have earned if they had stayed and been a five-year employee.
Okay.
Okay, that section looks good to me. Five twelve, personal leave without pay.
So back to our other policies, when you go leave without pay, the benefits cease unless you pay for them and then your vacation accruals also cease.
Yes.
Until. But we need to restate that, that your vacation accruals cease.
When does?
They have to be continuous employment for four weeks before they're supposed to be back in.
Yep.
Yeah, but if you.
It's under benefits on five twelve.
Say that, make that clear again just from earlier.
Go ahead and put it again right there.
Yeah, five twelve five.
Or can we say C-section, blah, blah, blah regarding vacation time?
Yeah, I could, I mean, I, I think.
Either way, just long as, long as it references it.
It's right there in benefit.
So you wanna put it again before five twelve five?
No, just.
Because it says, it, it says, it takes it for granted that you're gonna begin accruing it again without having said you stopped accruing in the first place.
Okay.
I think just for clarity's sake.
Okay.
We're just making it really clear and really clear.
Yeah, yeah, that way there's no question.
Other, I'll be a question.
Well, where, where is the limit to that? I mean, can I use all my time up and then go on not FMLA, but just personal leave and decide to do so for three months?
Ten days is the limit.
Ten days.
Is that the limit?
That's the way I'm reading.
Unless it comes to commissioner's court, no, or unless they're on FMLA.
That's under authorization, so you, there's your eligibility and then authorization, ten days or less.
So that's all the time they have to take personally, okay. So what is total time then? Let's say I've used a medical and, I mean, my vacation and, and sick, Tanya. Before my job gets taken away, how much time flows under?
FMLA, I mean, you get twelve weeks, but depending how much you use during that time off. Now, it can be, your supervisor can choose to hold your position, you know, however long they wanna hold it, if they can do that without hardship, but it's twelve weeks.
But it's not twelve plus ten days?
Well, under that personal, um, business, it may be that your relatives from Ukraine are coming in and you want to use ten days. It depends what it is, so they would get ten days personal leave if they've already used up their vacation. And that's not FMLA, so it's ten days.
So it's vacation plus ten days, but FMLA, yes, that would probably be your twelve weeks plus ten days.
Okay.
Because you would combine the two.
And during COVID, we held jobs longer just because.
But your, your, your official department head can choose to hold your job.
Okay.
We had this exact scenario last year with an employee that had gone through a surgery and then off, completed all their FMLA and then decided they needed a second surgery, you know, on this case. They had an option to hold their job longer.
Right.
But we were not given a timeframe and it could possibly come back.
I had that come up in my office even as an employee.
Is that FMLA per year?
It's a rolling.
It's a, it's a rolling count, so if I take FMLA in February, I get twelve weeks until the next February, if you take it in November.
Okay, so you're not eligible for.
It's, it's not based on our calendar year or calendar year, it's based on your calendar year when you exhausted it.
One a year, okay. Yeah, well, that makes sense.
In FMLA, am I provide, when I'm on FMLA, am I provided insurance for those twelve weeks?
Yes.
Without costing me?
Right, but you're supposed to, when you come off of FMLA, you are supposed to return to work. If you don't, we are supposed to bill you for that insurance time. We, however, have never done that, but it is written that we, we should and we can, but we typically don't.
But if you had like other family members on the insurance, that wouldn't, you, you would have to.
No, that cost is still yours, it's just the employee cost that we still cover.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Unless there's objection, objection, we'll move on to five thirteen, deferred compensation.
I did have one question, just because it's probably a Corey question on five thirteen one. Because we have security benefits in nationwide, are those the only two people can use?
Well, we have more than that, but the, the other ones are, we've had for twenty something years, one or two people on each one.
So if somebody were to enroll today, those would be their two options?
That would be their two options, we limited it down because.
There's so many.
Yeah, we wouldn't wanna keep up with ten different deferred compensation companies. So we limited it to, to.
So then on, that leads into five thirteen two, the employee works directly with a retirement specialist to decide how to invest their funds. Is that through those companies that we're offering, okay?
Bitcoin.
No.
Yeah, it's a good company.
Let us know how that works out.
I've been bit by Bitcoin, yeah. It's coming back.
Yeah, it's okay, thank you, you got it. You got it.
Now, did we lose it?
No. Oh, no. Oh, no. Did you see it? Oh, no, okay.
Do we have anybody participating in that right now, that deferred compensation, because we do, you know?
Yes.
Yes.
I think so.
Do you?
We have several in each one.
Here's a drawing.
Okay.
This picture's off the, on the board.
Whoops.
Okay.
Yeah. And he's taking care of it.
Just, you know, I, I struggle with the fact that a hundred thousand dollar employee can put X into retirement, but a forty-five thousand dollar employee can only put X in retirement. Why is that the way it is? Why isn't there a maximum amount and if I wanted to put in?
It's based on a percentage of your pay, so that's set by the IRS.
If that's your TCDRS retirement, it's what limits that. I mean, if you wanted to go into these deferred comps, that's not. The only thing that's limited there is the total amount you can do based on age.
Yeah, your age and.
Deferred comps, a forty-five thousand dollar employee can put in the same amount as a hundred thousand dollar employee if their living situation determines that they can do that. The, the limit on it's only set by the IRS and on both ones. The retirement itself, the TCDRS retirement's set by the seven percent dividend.
And it's deferred tax, isn't it? So I guess that's probably why IRS has interest in it.
That is correct, because if you're sticking in it in pre-tax, you're gonna take, when you take it out, that's when you get to pay the tax on it. In theory, it would be that you would be at a lower tax bracket when you took it out.
How is that?
You don't wanna know.
Oh, is somebody hacking this?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
During their time of.
It sounded like somebody need to call nine one one.
Oh, I don't think that's the case for them.
Maybe a lot more interesting than the personnel files. Well, well, maybe more entertaining, maybe that's.
So I think we're done with deferred compensation.
Wait a minute, cafeteria plan.
We can move on to the cafeteria plan. Tanya, I'm guessing Joyce will remember.
Yes, and we talked yesterday and she, poor lady, she thought we were done with what we sent because we stopped for, until she got approved for payment. And so when I sent her the batch yesterday, she had started on her final copy and I said, oh, no, 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 we're not done. So she's gonna wait until I send her.
She should know better, you know?
Uh, yeah, so she's gonna wait and not do any more typing until we're done, so.
Was her final the first draft?
It was her final of.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yes.
First draft of the eighty-six.
Our cafeteria plan includes the vending machines down on the. Knock yourself out.
Where's this cafeteria at?
And that is all standard with FSLA and IRS as well. And we need to change that SharePoint, whatever we're calling that now.
Where do you see it?
Five fifteen four, down at the bottom.
Okay. Where are the benefits?
Five sixteen, family and medical leave. Wouldn't just stop at five sixteen one, we'll abide by the act and start with quality changes, it's what I'm gonna say.
Mm-hmm.
So FMLA, when two people are involved, only they both don't get twelve?
No, it's a combined twelve.
And we've had.
We've had that.
We've had cases where they each got twelve because they had a, a baby, but they weren't married.
Right.
And so they get, which makes people not happy when they, when they get to split their twelve.
Right, because it's the loss of spouses. So if you are not married, then yes, you each get twelve weeks. However, if you are married, you get a combined twelve weeks.
Interesting.
Lovely.
But this is not.
Welcome to the marriage penalty.
Our, our government does that on numerous.
FMLA is not anything tweaked by us.
No, it is not, it is a rule.
That's just our society.
Yeah.
Three words. Parachute. Don't get what you're talking about. No matter what you write, somebody's gonna find a loophole.
And the loophole is that once the child is born, um, if, a loophole we found, um, there was an extended hospital stay. Daddy took off the additional twelve weeks for the child, serious, um, medical condition of the child.
Right, so mom would get for twelve weeks, and then mom would get twelve weeks for the baby, cause of the child.
So then they both got twelve weeks.
Getting the child.
Yes.
So really, they can get, yeah, more than twelve weeks.
Really?
Cause they get their twelve weeks for their medical condition, and then if the child has a medical condition, you get their twelve weeks as well. You get to stack it.
Then you can get six, make it COVID time.
You all, you all would rather, you would rather be with the twelve weeks.
Not anymore.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Yeah.
But it is, you, you do get to stack that. So if you have a premature infant or something.
We've been on the same, but we're still recording.
Okay.
So, do we need a, a statement in the earlier part of this FMLA policy on how to, how we want it reported to HR?
And I, I think we can restate it, but it is stated elsewhere, um.
It should be.
That on the fifth day, mm-hmm, so I will find the wording.
Yeah, it is, it is earlier in the policy, but every statement that says contact HR or your department head should.
Okay.
So after, is it after five days?
Five days.
Five days?
And if it's a planned, it's supposed to be thirty days in advance, but we get the phone call that.
This is my area where we struggle with getting the notifications.
That's, thus why I said we need to state it, one of the first statements in the policy is that it's required to call or notify HR.
With. You have five sixteen eighteen? Two hundred and five sixteen eighteen.
On the re-statement?
Yeah, it's interesting. Substantial and grievous economic injury to Wichita County.
Not sure how we.
What does that mean? What that means?
I don't know. Quantify that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure this is a provision in the FMLA then, we're, we're just moving over.
It is. Mm-hmm. I don't know that there's anyone that's ever enacted this, but. I mean, I guess if you were, say, Lisa Patterson, that could be an issue as the jail captain, if her extended leave, you might need to.
So I guess if you're in the highest paid ten percent of the workforce, you are automatically considered a key employee.
I, I would think so by definition of your pay, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not there.
But.
Well, you're in the definition, so you don't count anyway.
Yeah, you don't count.
I don't see any issues with it. Again, I'm guessing definitions were pulled straight from FMLA?
They look like they are, yes.
All right, don't slow me down if you need to, but ready to go on to five eighteen, county sponsored membership.
I like this moving on.
Can, uh, do we have examples of things here?
Me.
Dues, sheriff dues.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, bar dues.
Okay. Lots of examples.
Stakeboard dues, you know. Yeah. Thank you. Um, like, I pay TFOA for listing, but I, it includes one or two members of my staff if I wanted to include more.
Okay.
But I budget for that in my budget process.
Do those have to each time be approved by the court or?
No, dues are not one of those.
In my budget.
It's part of the.
It's part of the budget process.
Okay.
It's a line item, even we have dues in there.
No, but the line items in the budget have the specific entities?
Some, some do if, yeah.
Yeah, it's in my budget.
But no, they don't have to go to court, they're in the thousand.
All right, let's head to section six, safety. Am I right in saying that the end of section six is the end of the review?
Yes, without a signature.
Well, let's, I'll add.
See if we can't finish.
See if we can't finish it, and then we'd have one final.
We could drag out six for the next couple of weeks.
Well.
You stop it.
Well, well, cause we will need to come back and revisit, it's a commissioner's beachroom's point earlier, um.
Well, after we get Joyce to retype it all and relook at it, then we'll need to do a final review.
Well, we also have some of those issues that I think the court talked about while I was gone and we needed to revisit.
Oh, yes.
Emergency should be treated at the most cost-effective location possible. Emergency room clinic, which doctor, you know.
WD forty.
WD forty.
Is there periodic workplace safety training, somebody doing that?
We're good in other departments that do that, but, okay.
Precinct.
Guess ours isn't, but.
And Mel, I think that TAC really does an overview pretty much even as far as county clerk goes.
Well, you know, we have the safety inspection every year and, uh.
We got, we had one yesterday.
Did you?
Yeah.
We got dinged on some electrical stuff.
Did you already get your report?
No.
Okay.
Well, they gotta find something, they, they can't just, you know, they gotta find something.
Cost a hundred and thirty-two thousand to fix everything.
Last one, we didn't have a mat in front of our ice machine, that was our, that was our deal.
I don't know that we have one either, we got a brand new ice machine, no mat.
Uh-oh, that's a violation.
Your ice machine's in the break, in the big room though, isn't it, the lunchroom? See, I don't think he went in there, uh, much, he was in and out real quick.
Who did it, Jack Coffey?
No.
No, Jack retired, we.
Oh, he did, see, he, he pretty well knew everything and he was familiar with it all of this.
We don't have our person yet.
That's why you got dinged up on electrical stuff. That can happen. It's good though, and I, our guys are pretty good about wearing their safety vests and all that. In fact, I know when Jerry was forming, if I went out on the roadside, he'd tell me, go get my vest, I'd get out of the truck, he'd say, I'd go put it on.
Jimmy brought one, put it in the truck.
Yeah, they, they're, they're pretty good at that, and that's, that's good, I'm glad, that's your job, I'm glad you're doing that, that's good. Put your vest on, okay?
Six dot oh one dot oh seven, any loss of work time or loss of pay should be recorded, why do we even need loss of pay? Cause if we lose work time, the other's office is gonna know it.
Yeah, and if it's workers' comp, they're not gonna lose pay.
Yeah, just.
Scratch out.
Oh, and or loss of pay, just any lost work time should be reported to Human Resources Office.
Tonya, are you able to get any background information when a person applies that concerns this?
Um.
You know, I ran into lots of scammers off the trash company that, and once they hit me, I realized they've done this the last three jobs they had to.
Um, if we're doing our reference checks, the last three jobs should be able to tell us. Um, there's nothing on our, in our application, or they don't have to divulge it on our resume. I will say, Representative Cook, um, from Texas House is proposing a bill to go into effect September first of twenty-three, so it's not done yet. I'm gonna record it, aren't I? Um, that we cannot put on our applications, uh, where we ask if they have a previous law violation, or, cause we have law violation. I think we have conviction, we cannot do a background check on employees until after a job offer has been made.
That's crazy.
Hope it doesn't pass.
But, but really, that's in conflict on a CDL driver.
And it's in, it's for, um, public employees, and, you know, it hasn't passed yet, but it's all over that listserv there, they, it's just. It's a bad move.
I wonder how much traction that's really gonna get.
Well, it's still too early to know.
Yeah, it's just.
Six oh one dot six.
Sorry, back to this.
Is it, is there any problematic language with that as far as HIPAA?
No, cause our offices, her office and mine are privy to HIPAA information.
Should be submitted to, only to the Human Resources.
And we keep it all.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't need it.
Not to your, not to your supervisor.
No, just to HR, cause your supervisor doesn't need your medical information.
Yeah. Can we change that to only the Human Resources Office Director? That way, we're not in violation of HIPAA if they've given it to their supervisor. It should be submitted directly.
If they choose to give it to their supervisor and choose to share it, that's their choice. Now, it's the requirement of giving it to their supervisor, we can't do. We can require it for HR.
It ends up in their file at their, in their supervisor's desk and not.
So you can choose to disclose all of your medical if you willingly, but we just can't force them to do that. Except for certain areas, like we get the bill, so that's for workers' comp, so that's why we're protected. She gets it cause she manages them.
And Sheriff's Department is currently deleting all their, and sending everything to us out of, uh.
All right, so I'll just.
In ten, does that mean that only the Human Resource Director can investigate these?
Safety related?
Incidents?
I'd like to say, I'd like it to be Human Resources Direct, or Department, cause we all do them. Hailey and Kathy work with Sedgwick and our Workman's Comp, um, insurance people, but, you know, I don't want to say, well, I sent it to Tonya, but she didn't, you know, it, it should be, we direct it to where it needs to go in our office, so I'd rather it's a department than director.
Do, so, do you all investigate?
But I think you're turning.
Elected officials and, and, and their supervisors don't help in that investigation, or not involved in that investigation?
For the most part, the report we get, the first report of injury, we check to make sure it's complete, and then we will contact if there are more questions on it. Or if Sedgwick, um, has a question on it, Nettie will ca- call us and ask us to find out, but, um, if the report is complete and seems to be, they, there's a few boxes they don't check rarely, like, um, what kind of medical, a lot of times they check none, and then they give us the doctor bill. But it's, uh, the ones we get thus far are pretty complete, and then the ones that come in from other departments, they just don't do them that often. And so we help them complete them and we ask, ask all the questions. So we haven't had any trouble with investigating, it's usually all done.
So if we have a safety problem, injury in the jail, are you all going to the jail facility and investigating or?
No, and, and a lot of.
She's just looking at the reports that she gets.
Looking at the reports.
And the.
I don't think it means, I think this is, um, badly worded.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I mean.
Because she's not going out to site to see what caused the injury.
Yeah, we don't have a risk safety specialist that's going out and evaluating what, what actually took place.
And she's not doing.
How that will be.
I mean, the individual departments investigate their safety issues, and then, then that report's given over to you and you're investigating from the report side, but you can't really say that HR's investigating all.
Yeah, no.
Into it.
That's, unless we had a specific safety person that's going out and investigating.
Yes.
Well, if a gun precinct gets.
Department supervisor.
Yeah.
Ran over on the roadside, there's gonna be a lot more investigation done before that ever gets to HR.
Oh, yeah, that's law enforcement will get that.
Well, I mean, in a, probably also the, the commissioner running it there is gonna be involved in it, talking to employees, there's gonna be all kinds of stuff.
I'm not sure investigated is the term we should use.
What's the purpose of, what's the purpose of this having this statement in there?
Maybe it don't need to be.
Probably doesn't need to be.
Cause, yeah, if it's not a specific purpose, we're trying to reach the, then I would say, let's take it out.
Well, the reason I say that is, if we're going on, if we're getting involved in a big lawsuit, and you go back and pull your pant, your manual, and it says, well, you were supposed to do all investigations, why didn't you do it? I just think that's more grounds for reliability only.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like we're not following our own policies.
Correct, that's why I don't like taking it out.
Take it out.
But any documentation related to an investigation that could be used, a little workers' comp, where everything needs to come to your office.
So that's the purpose.
That's a good, that's a good reason, I mean, that's.
If we're having work-related injuries.
And it's already up there, though.
I mean, that appears.
I, I thought, yeah, it was already covered in one of these others.
In six oh one point four, it's already covered.
Yeah, that's, so we're.
Take it out.
Take it out entirely, because that implies that you have a risk safety specialist in your office that's gonna go out and actually do a physical investigation on anytime somebody smashes their mug.
Or runs on a wet floor, we get a lot of those. And it says, what could have been done to prevent it, don't run on a wet floor.
Which is pretty much, the city had a risk safety specialist on anything overly smashed on it, investigate and look at what happened and make recommendations, and we don't have that.
Her face turned red red. Yeah, I guess, we all guess.
Okay, six oh three, security. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, that sheriff's office records, we, that doesn't exist, I mean, we don't call them anymore if we're gonna go into the building.
Who do we call?
We don't call anyone.
We don't call.
We, we have the code for the building. Um, but yeah, that's not, it used to be that you would, you know, when you came in and you turned it off, you would call and let them know you were in the building.
So.
Just scratch out that line.
Take out that sentence.
So do you all have separate codes downstairs?
No, it's one code for the building.
After hours or?
That's, that's for security.
I'm not even sure, it's, it's never even really set anymore, actually, it, it hasn't been set.
So right now, anybody that comes to the NX has the same code, so if somebody came in and sold one stuff, you couldn't tell who was in there?
You'd have to look in the video camera, but yeah.
But no, no key code, that's, that's kinda weird.
You're correct. No key code.
Well, you have to badge in, don't you? At the end.
Through the door, yeah.
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 So I mean.
So there is a badge entry, you.
Yeah, you have to use a key and your badge, but everybody has the same alarm code for the building.
We still have badges.
The badge will, yeah.
So.
Well, how are we protecting our classified documents?
They're in the garage.
So the classified documents in our office.
They, they used to be in the little parking garage till we gave it to the city.
And renting the house to Hunter.
My office, the only one that could get into my office, my office has. And they all have their own code.
Six dot three dot two, all individuals with the exception of law enforcement will be screened upon entering the courthouse. Is that necessarily correct?
When I actually sent an email to the SO, because, um, recently, actually.
Because elected officials aren't required to.
Well, and that, the response was that wasn't quite correct from what David was, um, allowing. Let me find that email, um, because I'd heard that elected officials weren't being checked, but I, so I asked specifically, I'm like, well, what about the appointed official? Because that doesn't make much sense, if you're an official, you're.
And I have asked.
The response was that he was only comfortable with the county judge and those kind of think it was. Because I asked metal detectors. So the answer was, I, well, I asked, it said, I've heard security tell the elected officials they don't need to go through the detectors, et cetera. As an appointed official, does that apply to me as well? The answer from David was, well, I'm good with all district judges, county court at law judges, JPs, and our county judge getting to walk, getting the walkthrough courtesy. Herabationers that are allowed by state law to carry a weapon may also pass through. So, he, it doesn't say anything about anyone other than the judges.
And I would like to amend it, because once we moved downstairs, and I mean, even before the sheriff's department was being remodeled, I mean, everybody goes through that, if they parked over on the sheriff's department side, they went down. My office is gonna be right there, and I have to walk all the way around. It's just, it's what's the point, and he, and wibble.
But, but then what's the point of having the metal detector if we're not gonna check everybody?
It check everybody, because a police officer can twist off with a gun just as well as I can with my butter knife. I mean, and Judge Gossam and I talked before he left, because it, and I don't mind doing it if everybody's doing it, but when I see other people coming in and out of the other exits and not going through, because I was stuck, I have a metal knee and a metal back, I've set it off every time.
So your access card, Tanya, well, it works on that side entrance.
Yes, and I've always.
You've just been told you're not supposed to.
And I can't use it unless, after hours, and so I stand like this, which is fine, but one time I, I kinda stood like, because my hand hits and I have to walk all the way around, so I was like this, and I was told, please stand like this. And it's a little degrading, good, but it's okay, if everybody does it.
I walked through it.
Who was the older guy that we had forever, security?
Penalena.
Before.
Lives out on, uh.
He was getting.
Rogers.
Lowry?
Yeah, Tom.
He had.
When it talks, yes.
Got me passing, I go through that side gate because of the pacemaker.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I, I don't know that my new, newest one would be affected, but I did think about it in terms of several times a day going through that. You know, I'm not supposed to hold a weed eater at like, or some fun things.
Yeah, because there's.
But he got, he got me passing, and I just have always.
Is this something we should revisit with the SO?
With the SO, we need them here.
I think we need, because there needs to be a level of trust with people that you have given an access key card to.
Yeah, I agree.
Building, building maintenance, they're coming in with tools all day long, every day.
But I, my, I mean, my card goes on both buildings, but I don't work in this building, I work in the other one, but.
Well, really, he didn't even list commissioners on that.
He did not, you are correct.
Walked with, and nobody ever.
Department heads and elected officials are the only ones with access cards, is that right?
Well, everybody in my office.
Remember, do you, do your guys, your whole team does.
My team does.
My entire team does.
Your whole team does. I have an access.
Everybody in the annex is gonna have an access card.
Now, that doesn't mean we have individual control, I can lock down who can open which door, period.
Correct.
It's not all or nothing, I have full control over who, what card, so.
So, when we reassigned parking in the back parking lot, it was reassigned with the understanding that whoever was parking in the back parking lot could use their access card.
At that back door.
To go to the back door.
Right, so, so that's the question, if y'all are gonna sneak in the back door and you don't have to go through, you know, if you're coming from my building, why do I need to walk through the security?
It's, I think it's.
So it's one of those.
Let's, let's put this one on that revisit.
Yeah, let's.
Because there may be a legitimate security reason that none of us are thinking of that, that should be, so, let's.
Are we going back to a key, I mean, a card entry on this back door when we get it finished?
Yeah.
It still works.
It's still there.
It's still.
You'll still go through it.
It's just, we're not using it right now, but.
Unless they have a little slide latch across there, it's working right now.
Okay.
Right.
I'm not sure my card works anymore.
That fifty cent piece?
That fifty cent piece will stop you every time.
You said when I come up here, uh, after hours on the weekends, it's not the most secure?
No.
That door.
Maybe not.
I'll tell you what, the last time I had to come up here on a weekend, I came this close to getting trapped in the elevator, and that's a scary scenario.
Oh, yeah.
Be good if your phone didn't work too, you could sit there and bring a sandwich.
And it was very confusing as to what was locked and what was not unlocked, and I decided that I'm gonna make every effort not to be here.
Yeah. We need, there probably needs to be a whole agenda to discuss.
Yeah, get a, get a, get a point on it.
At Rutherford Courthouse Security Annex, including.
Well, it's funny, interesting that we have buildings that don't have security, that any system on them.
Well, and that's one I wonder if, I don't know, Mel, I mean.
Or the annex, it's never turned on.
I wonder if that's one that is eligible for and should be executive session, because we're talking about security.
Yep.
It probably shouldn't be on agenda. Yeah, yeah, and it's, yeah, we don't necessarily wanna.
I, I agree, it's worth, it's worth, it's worth talking through.
But we don't really wanna broadcast what our plan is.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Really our weaknesses or strengths.
We'll, we'll, we'll check on that and see what we can do.
Mel, does your, on your security, is it working good for you?
Um, so far, I haven't had to try, well, mind you right now, what I've been told, and I don't, I've been told some inconsistent things like this, is I don't have elevator access in this building, and they tell me I need to be out here at five fifteen every day, because they say they're gonna shut it down, so I have to, I like run out of here every day, so. Getting in, I haven't tried to get in this building, I was able to walk right over with my key card and get into the annex, um, to go to Jim, Jim Rasmussen's retirement party, and I just thought, I wonder if this will work, and I hit it, and it went in, and I was under the impression I didn't have annex access anymore.
Well, I think right now our cards are, are looking in both buildings, right?
And we still have, and I just.
How much we say just.
But.
Yes.
It is working for me so far, I mean, we got, if we get, once we get the situation to work out, I think the things would work, but I haven't really tested the jack hours in the courthouse. Um, since I, since, since October when I started.
Just to remind them we're recording in our access, their non-accesses.
Well, central stairway used to be locked all the way up, so you, you could get in, but you could only get out on the first floor.
Commissioners and judge. Uh, I know, it's. This is being broadcast, I would keep that in mind.
Yeah, we need. And we sure need IT involved in this.
Let's make it a closed session with sheriffs on this at some point.
Yeah, we, we continue with that.
Mel, my question was that, is it conducive to you to enter your office? I ran into a door at Tex dot, and I called Brian, um, Moore back about it. All he had to do was hit his bar, hit the bar at Tex dot, when I went out there, I hit the bar and the door opened up. And I just wondered, I got to wondering about your, yours door doesn't do that, you have to.
Yeah, I gotta pull it open, and it's fairly heavy, I mean, it's not super heavy, it's not like a back door, but it's heavy, and it's, you know, I, that's fine, that's not as annoying as getting into the elevator area downstairs, that's, that's a challenge getting in that thing with those metal doors, and it's, yeah, that's a challenge. Yeah, it could be better, but it's, it, you know, I don't know how to make that door that I'm going through more secure and keep the, keep it more accessible. I, there's probably a way, I don't, I don't know.
He gave me Texoma builders, who services them, but he said, like, if you, you can code in, you code in to your office, and that's good. The problem is, and they can do the same thing, but when I hit the bar, when I hit the little bar, it opens up for me automatically, where at yours, once Deb says okay, I have to open the door.
Yeah, well, ours, yeah, we have a setup where unless, if I have a code and I have a key card and I can get into mine, but anybody else obviously has to buzz in and we can buzz you in. Yeah, it would, I think you'd have to redo that whole door, I mean, in some capacity, which you could do, it's expensive to do all that stuff. That's what's more expensive than people think it is, so anyway, that, that's, I, I'm getting by fine with it at this point, I mean.
Is that something we're gonna add to the annex, the auto doors, so that?
Yeah, one, one set of doors on the front will be ADA, well, they're ADA compliant as they are, they will be auto.
There needs to be a better way for them to open, because I watched Mel hit the pad over here, and then he has to, if he can't open the door closest to him, because then he has, so he has to go over to the other door.
Just, I notice that, and I've had that a lot of times, but.
No, it, it will be addressed at the annex in this new construction.
Alright, so we're gonna put section six oh three on hold for a discussion with the sheriff's office to make sure we're looking at security overall in a, in a comprehensive fashion. Alright, six oh four, infectious diseases, y'all, actually, let me stop, y'all.
We're against one.
And try to.
We're against infectious diseases.
Are y'all, alright.
We're opposed.
We've, we've got eight pages left to get to the end, do y'all wanna press on and do that?
Yeah, I, I need to leave just a little before eleven thirty, I've got another meeting.
Okay.
So, be cool.
Alright. Infectious diseases. I should note this, who is the Wichita County nurse?
We don't have one.
I don't. So, six oh four five says the results of these TB tests will be read and maintained for Wichita County nurse.
I think that's the health department nurse.
Yeah, I thought Tommy took care of it.
Well, it used to go, we had, when the jail was here, it was the nursing staff down there, and they would go down there and she would read them. But if it's new employees or something with a jail, it's out at Walensky, and they look at them. But they do have the nursing also over at the LEC, which is separate, and they read a lot of theirs.
But we don't have a per se Wichita County nurse, and that's their title and job and facility and everything.
So, the results of these tests will be read and maintained by.
I think the ones with the jail, uh, because their new employees have to have one, those come to us. And some of them don't go for their test reading.
But who's gonna read these, that's a good question.
But aren't we obligated to do those with the health district? No.
I don't think so, we go through Walensky.
So, if somebody has a typhoid fever here and they've confirmed, we don't have to notify the health district?
Well, that's a different question.
Your, yeah.
Their tests will be notified.
The notification of it, yes, but the actual testing and getting it read, we don't have to do over there, we can have it done anywhere or by needle.
Because I had my, when, I had my initial one done over at the Council of Texas. I mean, I know it's talking about annual tests, so we, we allow employees to do it, we encourage them to do it?
We don't have an.
I don't think we do an annual.
We have an annual test.
We just have the new employees.
No, I've, I've had Indigent Health tested for various things before, but we, we had our previous medical supplier come over and do it.
Hmm, this section is all.
So let, let's get rid of six oh four five then, an annual TB test?
Yeah, I don't know, we.
So, it may be in there because we, we do test for jail staff.
Mm-hmm.
But not annually?
But not annually, it's usually, when something's happened, or a new employee.
Yeah.
Well, before we move on, just, I think it's in there because we do test our jail staff, but I don't, I don't know that it's written the way we want it.
Would it not just be in the, in the initial TB test section?
No, because they may have additional tests, if, if you've worked in the jail for five years. I think they test periodically.
That we do the additional test is if something's happened, employee has.
So.
Bit on them, thrown feces, uh, whatever, then we do.
Those are incident based, because I know if, let's say there's somebody in there, let's say in solitary, and y'all went in, you had to fight him, and then you find out the day after you had TB, well, they'll, they'll do TB test on the, on the officer, so.
But that's not.
I think it's an incidental based type deal.
You take the annual portion out, is any, any employee who discovers they've been exposed to contagious condition while on the job, or will be exposed to a high exposure environment. May be subject to testing, I don't know.
Personal testing, or?
Yeah. Or be provided with, with testing. I think that's why it's in there, I think it's, that's what it's getting at.
So, retitle that section additional testing. Take out the annually sentence, the results of these test segments, and then so at the gistry, if any employee discovers that they've been exposed to a contagious condition while on the job, or will be exposed to a high exposure environment, personnel should notify their supervisor. Additional testing may be required.
May be required.
Yeah, may be required in such incidents. And I think, I think we meet what it's trying to say.
Is it subject to the discretion of the supervisor or HR, who gets to?
Well, the employee may want it.
I, I mean, we haven't ever denied it if the employee wants it.
Jim, will this, period, additional testing may be required in such instances?
Yeah, I mean, if I were working in the jail and I was exposed.
I'd say may be required or offered.
Okay, that's good.
Or offered, I like that, maybe required.
Offered in such instances.
Offered.
It's.
I mean, if you wanna go get tested, you can go get tested, yeah.
That's why we had different testing in Indigent Health, because we had people that came in that were.
Right.
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah. I mean, it shouldn't happen anymore since we've changed the way that's set up, but we, we've done it in the past.
Anything else on that? Six oh five, safety incentive awards.
Can I move up underneath safety?
I would think so, actually.
Six oh one, yes.
Yeah, it should.
It kinda came in, it looks like it was an afterthought.
Right.
Mm-hmm. I think it should be before, security.
Yes. Attached somehow to safety.
Yeah.
Want to tie it down to be held each November, because we haven't been holding it in November.
Uh, maybe you should just say annually?
Annually, yeah.
During an annual award presentation ceremony, scraps.
Six oh five, incentive awards.
Yep.
Anybody going to help Woody cook pancakes tomorrow?
Yeah.
Stupid guy roped into that.
I told him I'd help him next year, but.
I'm there in the morning, right there.
Yeah, Mickey's going at four thirty.
You on the four thirty team?
Well, he said four thirty.
Yeah.
Or six, and I was like, well, let me tell you, four thirty's not really looking that good, I'll be there at six.
Have fun with that four thirty.
I just don't care for the four thirty at all.
How long does your shift last, do you know, or can you give out?
Till somebody shows up to replace you.
Ooh. No. That might be a commitment there.
He said, he said only a few hours.
Yeah.
I mean.
You give notice, right?
Something under ten, but I'm, I'm guessing two.
I'll get, I'll get two, but I gotta go.
One of the longest days I've ever spent was down there in the Bull Ring with a booth.
Oh, yeah.
Ah, it's long.
Man, that's, that's, that's six in the morning till six at night, and that booth is tough.
That's brutal. Then you gotta go out and gather all your materials up out of the trash cans, and it's outside, recycle, so.
Yeah.
So, did y'all get through the rest of it, we done?
Yep.
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 Did y'all finish up, uh, six oh five?
We actually talking about the pancake feed, but if you wanna say we're done, we can be done.
Alright, if anyone has anything on safety incidents, okay.
I would, just all of those and safety, vehicle safety stuff as well, I think, just stack them up.
Yeah, all needs to be rearranged.
You know, I don't think we've had any problems with it, to be the truth, I mean, we have a few incidents. You know, here and there, but it's not just been a tremendous problem.
Okay, so we're going on to six oh seven, workers compensation.
The, uh, let me just mention on that, uh, vehicle operating, uh, because we can still get this done, it's just dangerous, uh, procedures. So, you know, those trucks come in, like your gravel hauling trucks, and they're gonna be governed about sixty seven or whatever. And we can manipulate that, but we open the door when we manipulate that, it has to go to brookners, and they have to do it, but. The first thing that, uh, we're encountered on any incident is highway patrol's going to want to see, a, and they'll, uh. Pull from our truck computer that modification occurring, and it puts us in a dangerous position. Um, a lot of times, because they'll use that, even if we're completely in the clear, as far as what the, uh, accident occurred was in somebody else's total fault. But if we have manipulated or changed our, um. Calibrations through the vendor, it's gonna come back to bite us, and so just caution everybody about that, just having been through that with.
Not saying don't do it, but just be aware of it.
Yeah, and I, I really, uh, those employees don't like those things governed about sixty eight miles an hour, but.
I don't see why it's a problem myself, I mean, we're paying people by the hour to drive them, so.
Sure.
You know, it's.
And, and you tweak it so it'll run seventy five, and then somebody T-bones us and, and, or in a passenger car, then that's gonna come up. Yeah. That we somehow were, um, deficient, because we modified what the layout of that truck was initially.
And driving the extra four, five, six mile an hour isn't gonna get you another load a day, so, it, it doesn't bring any productivity.
Right. That just occurs, I mean, just keep, be aware of that, uh, I highly recommend against it.
And keep those tires updated.
Second thing they're gonna look at.
I gotta remember.
So, so, Tonya, is that something, let's say that, just like Barry mentioned, I have a blowout, and I put a truck into the ditch. Nothing, no harm, no foul, nothing was tore up, maybe the truck fender was messed up or something. Do all of our people know that we maybe should have a drug test done on that?
And this came up in our training yesterday, they wanted to know, and I can't think of any, and I kept calling a major collision or major, in, they don't want us to call it an accident, because an accident means nobody was at fault, but a major collision. And to me, that's, if, if they put a truck in a ditch, and there's damage to the vehicle, I think to have everybody in the clear, they need to go for a drug screen. And I can't think of any accidents we've had where they haven't gone, whether there's an injury or not.
Are we including sobriety?
Unless.
Should, yeah, it should be.
Un, unless it's like, they backed a dump truck into a mailbox, I mean, we don't drug test for that. But, um, what do you mean, are we including sobriety?
Cause, uh, if you take a drug test, it's not gonna catch sobriety necessarily, there's a, you know, it only lasts for so long.
Yeah, they, he gave us the numbers for, um, alcohol, and it's, um, there is a, what did you call it, not a grace period, but a grace.
Right.
Where you are unsafe to drive, but you will not be started.
Well, we do the point oh three, no, or point, point three, no.
You are sent home for twenty four hours.
Right, but after twenty four hour, but if you're not testing, you don't know if it's got alcohol.
We need to test after.
Right, and those people who are in that category are supposed to be test, tested once a month for a year, even those that have gone through, if they've gone through program.
But, but what I'm saying is, at the initial time of that collision.
Mm-hmm.
Are we doing a sobriety test, you can't just do a drug test, it's not gonna catch the alcohol, and we have to do that pretty quick, or is every hour that goes by?
Do they not need to go for a test right then?
They, they're supposed to be driven to a test right then.
And then are we including the sobriety test with the drug test?
Yes, 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 it is, and it is marked.
That's, that's my question.
And the, Tonya, what about the obitu, uh.
The obitu.
Marked obitu, or opiate, uh, reporting, are we?
They're all in that drug screen, and the foreman got instructions yesterday on, you know, who they need to send, if foreman can't go get them and take them, somebody needs to be responsible for taking them, picking up. Picking them up and taking them, contacting us, we set it up, they go.
But what is our procedure for, let's say that one of my guys gets prescribed hand?
They, at, after, during, or when they're drug screened, they have to provide their, uh, prescriptions, and usually it's their, their bottle with the label and dates, and their, their current bottle or their current prescription, they provide it to the, the drug screen people.
But, well, what, if the med, medication that they are on, when they go to the doctor and he puts them on it, who gets that information that they are not, or shouldn't be driving?
Should be driving, so, okay, Joe Low goes to the doctor and he's put on a heavy narcotic, is he required to tell his commissioner that he probably shouldn't be driving, or his foreman?
He should, and, and do they?
Should, but.
Is it in here yet?
No.
No, that's, that's one of the things we need to address, that, and at what, at what level triggers a, a mandatory test? So, we, if we hit a mailbox and knock the mailbox off of the water grater, does that trigger a test, or?
Well, and I wonder where the liability is, if we have an employee that's on a narcotic.
Yeah.
And he doesn't inform us, or he does inform us and we don't, you know.
Don't remove it, yeah. Yeah.
And he hits somebody and we have a lawsuit.
See, on their initial DOT, um, when they come to work for us, we get their list of prescriptions, but if somebody is prov, if their prescriptions change, we don't, I don't know how we.
I mean, it could be a temporary situation, he had a, you know, an injury, and he's on a narcotic for ten days, or.
Yeah.
Well, it's not just a narcotic, there's some medication, if they, they don't recommend you operating heavy equipment, so does that mean if you're taking Sudafed?
Right, but they're.
Yeah.
Euphalyse, or semolin, yeah.
If you're taking allergy medicine, are you liable if you have a, I don't, I mean.
I don't know.
It's probably worth putting in here that an employee who has, is put on some type of, wha, whatever that wording would be on that type of prescription, medication, needs to report that to their supervisor immediately.
The prescription that would require.
If it's labeled do not operate heavy machinery, then they, they have a duty to report.
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah, cause so, for sure, some bottles will say do not operate.
Yeah.
Sometimes it says take care if operating.
Yes, that's true.
Which is sort of annoying.
How about labels?
It's, it's, that's their liability disclaimer there, that's what that is.
They warned you to just be careful.
Yeah.
If it says, if it specifically says do not operate heavy machinery, this, I've, I've had.
Some of them do say, do say it exactly that way, yeah.
How about if we just say, an employee puts on any medication labeled with their warning not to operate a motor vehicle or heavy equipment?
Has a duty to report that to their supervisor.
Has a duty.
Would you wanna put a caveat in there that if your job requires it, because if my people are on it, it really makes no difference.
But that's why.
If your job requires, if that's, if your job requires you to operate a motor vehicle, and.
Yeah, I think we were all kind of assuming that, because it was in the vehicle safety.
But I think we're putting it in. It's in the vehicle safety section.
Yeah.
And then, then we, we, we still need to determine at what, at what level. Well, I think. Requires a, a.
Well, I think that any, anytime that there has been, um, property not belonging to us, um, destroyed, and property belonging to us has been destroyed. I think both of those typically, uh, should qualify to, to do it.
No, that goes, anytime we knock down a reflector stage when we're mowing.
Now, that one wouldn't, um.
And don't, and you know as well as I do, that every once in a while a mailbox will sneak up on somebody mowing, and.
Yeah, and there's only way.
Man, I didn't see that.
It's, what happens too frequently to.
Do you have a test for just being a?
A DA?
DA?
My DA.
And not a district attorney.
That's a judgment call.
The other DA.
Yeah, there, there's gonna be, yeah, I guess.
I do that every once in a while myself, Jeff, I'm getting to that.
You have to be able to ask the tech risk management team.
Well.
Yeah, it needs to be a.
My foreman raises the bar.
If property damage is over five hundred dollars.
Here's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, something like.
This, um, they went through that reasonable suspicion testing, and like you had an employee who knocked, who did several things, I think it was yours, somebody had an employee that did several things in a couple months' time.
Can, yeah.
That can be, that the foreman know if it's reasonable suspicion, and they have, they, they've got a checklist to follow.
Six footer.
And if it's, if they've hit a fifty dollar mailbox, but you think Johnny's got something going on, they can request that person go.
Well, I think that the optional ones are, we can always do, it's the mandatory ones, at what point would we mandatory?
At what point does it become mandatory?
Mandatory.
They're, they're automatically tested, so, we don't do it for every property damage, because there's, there's some property damage that's acceptable.
Who's gonna estimate the dollar value on?
Right here on the scene, because they gotta go right then.
In our daily operation.
By then, we're past the, the.
Cause property damage, taken back from our old world, we, we call in a, a eight one one call, dig test call, and. They mark something over here, and then our backhoe comes in and digs up two hundred thousand dollars worth of.
Backwater.
That was not, there was nothing that my guy had done improper, there was no reason to send him in for.
Yeah.
So, the.
The only reason to send him in would be to prove beyond a shadow of a doubt that he wasn't at fault.
But that's, that's, we, we need to write our policy if, according to that, how.
Cause it's as much to protect the employee as it is the employer.
And how do we trigger? Yeah, how do we trigger that?
I'm sure we're not the first to ask this question, will you reach out to the tech risk school folks, to see if they've got some good language on it?
I do need to run, Jeff.
Okay, you know what I mean?
I think.
It's eleven thirty, we'll, we'll sum.
They nearly made it, nearly.
We're never gonna finish.
We've done good.
Yeah.
We've done, we've done it right.
Considering we started, you know, getting nowhere on the first of July.
Yes, just thank y'all very much.
And just thank you, eleven March, we'll need to set and redo it again anyway, because everybody will change.
It's important to get it right, you know, they have, if you have these questions, it's.
Alright, then, if no one else has anything, this meeting is adjourned.